Thank you for your patience, call the meeting to order. I would like to invite from Grossmont High Stephen Beralto to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, please be seated. Okay, Member Hoy, would you please read our Grossmont Union High School District Vision Statement?
The Grossmont Union High School District is dedicated to providing a safe and collaborative learning environment which supports academic achievement and social development for all students. The Grossmont District operates on the premise that success for every student is dependent upon all groups in the organization, including teachers, administrators, parents, staff, students, and the community, working together to support all students in their development as lifelong learners, thinkers, and successful contributors to the community.
Thank you. We move on to several recognitions tonight. Could Assistant Superintendent Mike Lewis introduce the first five?
Thank you, President Shield. I'd first like to invite the Board and the Superintendent up front. And at this time, for our first two recognitions, I invite Mr. Larry Pear, our Director of Extended Curricular Programs, to the podium to honor our two CIF champion baseball teams.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Governing Board, President Shield, Superintendent Hot, soon-to-be Superintendent Swenson, honored guests. Baseball has been very, very good to us lately. And I wish I remember the guy on Saturday Night Live that did that, but it was a great line. Anyway, this past spring, I believe we had at one point four teams in the top 10 in the county. Forty percent. That's incredible. We just are so proud of what's happened in baseball, all our sports programs really, but baseball in the last few years, I think every spring we've had at least two schools here who have won CIF championships. So without me going on any further, I would like to introduce the schools who really did it, which first school up is Grossmont High School. Introducing Assistant Principal for Athletics and a former Grossmont baseball coach himself, Mr. Jeff Meredith.
Thank you. I'd like to ask the players to come on up and Coach Early to come on up. Coach Early also brought his son with him. You can come up too, bud. Stanley, come on up. We're league champions this year in the Grossmont League, and this is the sixth straight time in the CIF finals and the fifth CIF championship in the last six years for Grossmont High School. And congratulations to Coach Early and to the team.
Coach Early and members of the Grossmont baseball team. The members of the governing board congratulate you on garnering the 2010 Boys Division II Baseball CIF SDS Championship. The award is certainly a tribute to your dedication and commitment. Congratulations. Yes, now how do you want to set this up?
Our Division III champions were the Vicarials of El Capitan. Like to introduce their Assistant Principal for Athletics, Mr. Paul Hedberg.
Board and President, it gives me a great pleasure to introduce the El Capitan Vicaro baseball team. If you guys would all come up and Coach Steve Vickery. Our team was the league champions this year. They were also CIF champions, Division III, for the second year in a row. They've won the CIF championship four times in the last eight years. We have also, Brooks Noble was the Sportsmanship Award winner in the CIF championship. They played in Petco Park this year and were victorious there as an exciting game. And baseball, you know, this rich tradition that we have in East County doesn't just come naturally. I mean, it takes a lot of work. And Coach Vickery was the Coach of the Year last year. So, a lot of hard work. And you can see them, you know, any day out there, working very hard at the, you know, they're planning their trade. So they deserve a lot of accolades and recognition. They've done a great job. Not only that, we have a couple of players who were selected to the All-State Team this year. So, and they'll be returning players as well. Yep. So, good job, gentlemen.
Coach Vickery, on behalf of the governing board, we congratulate you for garnering the 2010 Boys Division III Baseball CIF SDS Championship. And congratulations to students, you've done a great job. Good job.
and Full Frost for sponsoring this scholarship. And I'd like to invite Peter Fagan to the podium to introduce Allison White.
Good evening, members of the Board, members of the administration, and members of the public. It is my great pleasure and honor, as the managing partner of Fagan-Friedman and Full Frost, to be here tonight to present a scholarship to Allison White. And I want to tell you a little bit about the scholarship series. It's a scholarship that was provided to five individuals statewide. And it was based on an essay contest, an essay on why education matters. And Allison is one of the five winners statewide. Allison is certainly a remarkable and deserving winner of the scholarship. She's going to be attending at San Diego State, majoring in psychology. And I want to read you just a little bit of the first paragraph of her essay, and I think it will explain why she was selected as one of the winners. I should say that we do not select the winners, we fund the scholarship. The winners are selected independently. If it was up to us, we'd probably select winners from client school districts. So I'm very happy that a winner actually came from a client school district, but we were not involved in that. I want to read you the intro. "The irony of traditional success, being wealthy and famous, is that many of those, like celebrities, who are well-known and have endless riches, often do not have a noteworthy education. Truth be told, I have no desire to be traditionally successful, I have more modest expectations for success. My success lies within the idea that I will be content with my overall lifestyle and that my life's work will have a positive impact on those that I'm privileged to help." What a mature perspective for a young lady. Allison, would you come on up? And this doesn't happen... This doesn't happen by itself. A student doesn't succeed like this without parental help. Allison's parents are here also, John and Lucy White. Would you please come up as well?
That's all I have.
Allison, on behalf of the governing board and Dr. Donald Hot, we wish to congratulate you on being selected as winner of the Why Education Matters Scholarship Series in conjunction with the California Association of California Latino Superintendents and Fagan-Friedman and Full Frost. We salute your achievement and commend you on the recognition you have brought to your school and to the Grossmont Union High School District. We extend you our best wishes for continued success. Congratulations.
a little bit different than we would normally do it, but typically our directors of the various programs would make the presentation. But in this case, our Director of all of our EL programs throughout the district, Aaron Richardson, is one of the awardees. So I'm going to talk a little bit about Aaron. Aaron, could you come up to the podium, please? Since the time that Aaron took over this position at the district office, she has really transformed all of the EL programs in our district. And she has done that by working individually with the school sites, as well as the D-LAC, and most recently, which will be opening here very, very shortly, she had the vision for the Newcomer Center, which will be here in El Cajon, where she and her staff will be housed, but we will have an opportunity to work very, very closely with all of our, not only the new students, but the families as they come into the East County. So I wanted to thank Aaron for that, and that's also why she's been recognized by the San Diego County Office of Ed. So, Aaron, outstanding job. Thank you very, very much. And after Mr. Shield talks about you, I'd like for you to talk about Jorge, please.
Mr. Richardson, on behalf of the Grossmont Governing Board and the interim Superintendent Don Ha- Dr. Don Ha, I would like to commend you on your recent B. Gonzalez Leadership and Biliteracy Award. This honor is bestowed upon those special people who make significant contributions in promoting biliteracy for our students. It is in special recognition of their efforts for and commitment to promoting academic achievement for English learners. You have exhibited exceptional work in English-language education, and it is evident in your devotion to your craft. Congratulations and thank you for your service.
Well, it is my pleasure to, the same award every year, the county recognizes two people for leadership and biliteracy, and this year I'm happy to share the award with Jorge Aguilar. Jorge is our D-LAC president. Jorge has served as D-LAC president since 2008. He has had a vision for the D-LAC and has made sure that we have ELACs at each one of our school sites, that we have representation. He tirelessly goes around to make sure that our parent involvement activities have the information available to parents, not only in Spanish, Arabic, and English, but also that parents know about it and that they attend our involvement meetings. He's also on our parent involvement meeting for the district and has helped craft our first I-Parent Summit, which is going to happen in September. And this is part of the vision of Jorge and our team, and that is the reason why he is being recognized as a leader in biliteracy by the county.
Mr. Aguilar, on behalf of the governing board and interim Superintendent Dr. Donald Ha, I would like to commend you on your recent B. Gonzalez Leadership and Biliteracy Award. As an aside, I especially want to thank you as a parent for volunteering to serve our students the way you do. This honor is bestowed upon those special people who make significant contributions in promoting biliteracy for our students. Your dedication to English-language education is commended and is very much appreciated. Thank you, sir. Ralph has over 32 years of experience as a high school educator. He comes to us from the Nevada Joint Union High School District in Grass Valley, California, where he served as Superintendent for the past three years. Prior to that, he was in the Merced Union High School District, where he served as principal of Golden Valley High School, a school he opened in 1994. Ralph began his career as a social studies teacher and coach in North Dakota before coming to California in 1989. Our Board was unanimous in our selection of Mr. Swenson to lead the Grossmont Union High School District. He's an exceptional educator with a passion for improving and enhancing educational opportunities for all secondary students, including career technical education. He's also committed to building positive relationships with teacher leaders and staff across the district. We have the utmost confidence that Mr. Swenson will be a collaborative and student-centered leader who will help our schools and students succeed. I'd also like to welcome his wife, Chris, who is here with us tonight. But before I invite Ralph to say a few words tonight, I'd like to ask the Board members, Schreiber and Hoy, to share a few words about their visit to Grass Valley this week, if you'd like.
Ralph, it was an honor to visit your community. I will tell you, he was the best host and has a community that absolutely hates us right now. They love him so much, and everyone that came in wanted to sabotage the meeting so we wouldn't like him and hire him, and that's how much he was loved. I asked many of them to sum him up in three words: engaging, articulate, smart, caring. It was a peanut. I'm not going to cry, it was a peanut. We met with teachers, all the unions, representatives, city mayors, many superintendents. They have a lot of districts up there in Nevada City and Grass Valley. And we said that we're going to go move up there, Dick and I, and send Ralph down here. So, just a quaint community, a great secondary program, walked one of the big campuses out there with the principal, and just county supervisors. I mean, we met with everybody. He had everybody lined up. And again, I will tell you that he will be sorely missed, and we had to say, "I'm sorry, I'm sorry," many times as we hire him to the Grossmont District. And I will tell you, we are so thrilled and looking forward to that breath of fresh air that was so talked about up in Grass Valley. He came in at a time during budget cuts, very difficult times, and you know, Grossmont's no different, as we go through many of the challenges that we have across the board and in our school districts up and down the state and across the nation. So, he's got his feet wet, he's been tried and tested, and we're thrilled to have him in Grossmont. That's a few words? Thank you.
She said it all. There isn't much more I have to add, but there is one thing. There is one thing that is going to make him an outstanding superintendent, and you all ought to be aware of that. He was a social studies teacher. And you know how important that is. And then, another thing that we need as a community, Ralph will be out there, he will be talking to everyone, he will become a part of this community, and I know you are going to appreciate this man. But you also have to help him, because he's from North Dakota. And they eat mashed potatoes and creamed stuff, and they don't understand the importance of Mexican food. So, with that, I'd like to welcome you to the Grossmont District, and we are so happy to have you and become part of our family. So, Ralph.
I'm used to being the funniest guy in the room, and it's going to be hard with Dick. I want to, I want to tell you, I'm really humbled by your choice and honored by the trust that you've placed in me to take on the responsibility of leading this district. This district has a fabulous reputation and a rich history, and I look at the work Bob has done the last few years here, and I know that the shoes I need to fill are huge. And I will give you everything I have in my effort to do so. I come from a great community, I come from a strong group of schools, and I now come to an even more incredible community in terms of the richness and the background that I've been able to research about, the various schools in this district, each have different strengths and reputations that are well worth preserving and building upon. I will not just be talking as I go out in the community, I really will be listening. It's a skill that I was blessed to live long enough to develop, and I want to hear what you think. I want to hear what you feel, and I want to hear what you expect from our schools. It is never enough to stay where you are. I always think you need to reach even higher. And in the simplest terms, I can tell you, I set high expectations for kids, and I believe the kids will never disappoint you when you do that. I set high expectations for the people in our organization, and I know that they will do the same. I look forward to getting to know the Grossmont Union High School District and giving it the leadership it deserves and all the support that I can to make us even better than we are today. And thank you so much for giving me this opportunity. This is my wife, Christine.
We move on to communication from the public. Are there any public speaker cards received tonight? Oh, having none, I get to skip all those directions. And we move on to public report of action taken in closed session in accordance with Government Code 5495-7.1 and 5495-7.9. Member Schreiber, could you please report on closed session?
Thank you. Student matters pursuant to Education Code Sections 4907-3-49079. In closed session, the governing board reviewed the findings of fact, the conclusion of law on any written objection to the same which were presented by staff on student matters. As a result, I recommend the following action: suspended expulsions. I move to approve the suspended expulsions in cases number 10 through 14.
Second.
Please vote.
In stipulated suspended expulsions, I move to approve the stipulated suspended expulsions in cases number 140 through 158.
Discussion? Please vote.
Revoke expulsions, I move to revoke expulsions in cases number 32 through 36.
Discussion? Please vote.
Lift expulsions, I move to lift expulsions in cases number 58 through 81.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
In student matters pursuant to Education Code 60851C, I move to approve to waive the requirement to pass the California High School exit exam as a condition for receiving a high school diploma for special education students, number 90 through 112.
Second. Discussion? Please vote.
In closed session, the governing board approved the request for authority to send a waiver of specific prohibition of behavioral interventions in California Code of Regulations 3052, 1, and 5 to the California State Board of Education and Authorization for Superintendent or designee to execute the same. The roll call vote was four As, zero No's, one Absent. Public employee matters, in closed session, the governing board accepted an agreement of resignation of a classified employee in case number 15314. The roll call vote was five As, five O. In closed session, the governing board accepted an agreement of resignation of a classified employee in case number 9630. The roll call vote was five Zero. End of report.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of minutes of governing board meetings, could I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the regular governing board meeting of June 10, 2010?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Could I have a motion and second to approve the minutes of the special governing board meeting of June 3, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote. Could I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special governing board meeting of June 21, 2010?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please, wait, we can't vote yet. Okay, please vote. Could I have a motion? Oh, Dr. Woods, could you vote, please? There we go. Okay. Motion and second to discuss and approve the- Motion and second to discuss and approve the minutes of the special governing board meeting of June 28th, 2010.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Please vote. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve the minutes of the special governing board meeting of June 29th, 2010?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Please vote. Moving on to informational reports, going, let's see, our student board representative could not be with us?
Excuse me, Mr. President?
Yes.
Was that a record of special board meetings? Do we know, did we set the record with that one?
Did I miss something? Oh!
It's too bad we're not paid by the meeting.
I'm sorry, moving back to item 4C, approval of agenda, could I have a motion and second to approve the agenda as written?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the agenda? Please vote. Okay, moving on to special reports, the monthly report to the governing board by chairman, I guess it's not the chairman, vice chairman, of the Proposition H and U Citizens' Bond Oversight Committee, I call on Vice Chairman Alana Levens-Craig to make her report, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having me tonight. There was just one thing that we wanted to share, and each of you should have a copy of it, I believe, in front of you. Last month, Mr. Pankin said that the board had some questions regarding the CBOC's position on the 12th high school. And so, I can either read this to you if you'd like, would you like me to read, to read this, or do you want to review it and ask me questions if you have them?
It's short enough, why don't you go ahead and read it?
Okay. In response to a governing board request on June 10th, the CBOC discussed the 12th high school at its monthly meeting on June 30th, 2010. As a result of that discussion, the following recommendation and concerns passed unanimously, transcribed as follows. Recommendation that the governing board must be more direct in making the public aware that a trigger must be met before construction can begin on the 12th high school. First concern, that no bond funds should be spent until the trigger is met, except for land acquisition and design. Second concern, the recommended curriculum is driving costs of the new high school higher than originally budgeted. And lastly, in view of the fact that bond money is being spent to renovate all of the schools in the district, the governing board needs to disclose that this new high school is necessary without the need to close another school in the district. Can I answer any questions regarding any of the concerns or recommendations?
What was our question last month?
I wasn't here, but I believe that Mr. Pankin said that, that you-
Probably.
-had asked a question about the CBOC's position on the 12th high school. It was kind of a general question, and so Jim felt that we needed to address it in those areas that are CBOC-related.
Okay, I don't remember that, but, great.
Me either.
No, these are, we're, but I, but these are, these are valid issues. So, thank you for bringing them to the board. I guess one of my concerns was I don't think the board has ever talked about the possibility of closing a school, but I think you're right in making sure that we assure the community that we'll be very sensitive to that, and although it hasn't come up. And it may with the, I mean, I don't know, why the, why you even, what was the discussion about, around that?
Rumor mill has it that there is a-
Oh, the rumor mill?
Yes.
Okay.
But this rumor mill's been circulating for probably the last year or two.
Okay, well, I missed that rumor mill. So, what is it?
I didn't know there was any rumor mills in Grossmont.
Well, in Grossmont, yeah, but not a-
No, actually, the rumor mill had something to do with my school, with Santana High School.
That will never be closed.
Never. It had, what, what the feeling was is that because that was the smallest school, that it would be the most logical choice if there was, if they were looking at a school closure. And so, the concern was, is that if we're going to build a new high school and we're moving kids around, we are still serving the students in the district, but yet with another facility, that we're not then going to say, "Well, you know, we don't really need the facility anymore, there's not that many kids there," after we have put so much money into that school site.
Right, absolutely. And when I first saw this, I'm thinking, "Well, we probably should have done a boundary." I mean, I know Scott, where that fell into line, but is that something that was recommended by the Bond Advisory Commission, that we do a boundary analysis before we start sinking dollars into schools? Whether you use part of the school, or all of the school, or how those were going to be modernized?
Yes, that was part of the BAC, as I recall, to make sure that we incorporated demographic, population trend study, as well as a boundary study, to make sure that the bond dollars we were spending would be, you know, used.
In fact, I think some of the preliminary stuff we've seen indicates that Santana's area will be larger, larger. So, you know, I don't, I don't know where that came from.
Me, me either. Believe me, I, I have been.
The recommended curriculum is driving the costs of the new high school higher than originally budgeted. Talk to me about that.
There was been an additional $8 million that was requested, and I believe approved last month by the board towards the new high school. I believe $3 million was, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Patterson, but $5 million towards additional work with the land, and $3 million additional work with the buildings because there was some different configuration of the classrooms that's required to utilize the big picture model.
I think we had a quarterly meeting when that was brought up, and we talked about that all the designers and the curriculum were all getting together, and, you know, you reach for the moon, and then we had to peel that down. So, haven't we done that? Or is that still an issue?
We did reduce it somewhat, but we are still following the principle that the educational program drives the facility. And when we did decide to move ahead with the MET program, Big Picture program, that did drive the space allotments within the new high school. And Alana is correct that there was a budget adjustment that was requested during the overall presentation on curriculum, facilities, boundary studies, and all the rest of that.
Okay.
That's, you may recall, and this was another question you asked, that that same presentation that was made to the governing board was made to the CBOC the week before, so they had seen that too.
Oh, yeah, sure, absolutely. I remember that. Okay. But we did peel some of that back because it got larger than life, and we may still have to take a look at that, is what we're saying. But I thought when we shifted monies, that was for another purpose, not necessarily the curriculum that was driving the-
Well, we did add dollars to the budget to accommodate the estimated cost of the facility that will be supportive of the MET program. We don't know what the actual cost is until we open the envelope, please, if you will, but we did, we did do some desculping of the facilities and spaces. But where we've arrived is where we're going to engage the architect to do the detailed designs at this point.
Okay.
In other words, we may do some value engineering during the design process, but we're not going to do wholesale lopping off of, of facilities or spaces unless otherwise directed.
Okay, okay. And then, so let's talk about the, no bond fund should be spent until the trigger figure, trigger, where is the trigger? This, oh, the trigger is met. I'm used to saying trigger figure. Okay. Trigger is met except for land acquisition, design. I thought that was, we had money aside for infrastructure as well before, I mean, I thought the trigger was meant for letting any contracts other than land acquisition, design, and infrastructure.
The trigger is specific to letting of the construction contract. I think the discussion that occurred at the CBOC is whether there would be any onsite utilities and grading and infrastructure done, as opposed to just getting the utilities to the site. Bob Kiesling informs me, that's kind of a moot point because he's not going to be there before the trigger of value is known in, in the October, December timeframe, anyway. But there was a healthy discussion at the CBOC with that.
Yes.
And I, they were fair questions. I mean, it's kind of technical stuff, and, and so I think they covered it pretty well.
And our projection is, though, while we haven't addressed the trigger figure, it hasn't been an issue. And I, because I ask Scott all the time, is that forecasted to be an issue at this point? And it hasn't been.
And actually, during Katie's presentation tonight, she will show you a slide on what the recent, most recent figures are that tell you we are currently above that trigger point. We obviously don't know what the actual values are going to be come October, but I'm kind of ruining the ending for you right now. We're about 500 students over that trigger point at this, at this stage of the game, based upon last year's enrollment.
Okay, great.
Well, then, our new superintendent could go out and beat the bushes for more students too, right?
I think you, yes.
But, I'm sorry, were you done?
Oh, no, go, no, go ahead, go ahead.
Please, you finish.
No, go ahead.
I remember I heard a rumor about the CBOC.
Uh-oh.
And the rumor I heard was that you guys were looking into the issue of what was, that could be false rumor.
Oh, you know, they happen.
If one or two out there. But what I heard, that you were looking into, like, what were, maybe something, or triggered something, but what was going to be the annual cost of operating the new high school? Was that true, or is that someone just, I remember wrong?
I wouldn't say that we've discussed that specifically. I think because those costs are unknown at this time, especially with all of the debate regarding the number of students that are going to actually be enrolled, those types of things, we do address, I would say that, not specifically to the 12th high school.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I guess I'll go back to the minutes to see what my question was or something. I just don't remember my question about the 12th high school. Not that I probably didn't ask it, because I do ask a lot of questions.
Good question.
You can ask Dick.
Good.
Oh, thank you. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, moving on to the report- Oh, I'm sorry. One question, would it be possible for the CBOC to do a study to find out what the additional operating cost per 12th school would be?
I'd be more than happy to bring that towards Chairperson, if he feels the topic in scope.
Right. Because the question would be, you know, the fear about closing a school, you know, what is the, the cost impact for opening a school?
I honestly don't think that's within the scope.
Okay, it's not, okay.
I don't know if that's the case, but I don't think that's within the scope.
I, I was going to say, the CBOC is very good at self-policing, and periodically issues come up from members, if you don't mind, Alana, that other members of the CBOC, whether it be the chair, or the vice chair, or another member says, "You know, I really don't think that's within our charter." And as, as I recall, this very question was put on the table by a member, and that exact conclusion was made, that the operational cost really isn't in their purview, they're, they're there for the facilities dollars and program.
Yeah, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, I think you gave us that answer, now that I think of it, maybe, oh, a couple of years ago, and wasn't somewhere around $1 or $2 million a year would be the operational cost of the high school?
Yes, you're probably remembering that that issue did come up during the BAC deliberations, and there was some effort and some thought put into that. If you think about a standard comprehensive high school, we're looking at about $2.5 million roughly, from staff to, to utilities and all those fixed costs. Because on day one, this is anticipated to be a full comprehensive high school, we're looking at reducing, Mike and I and his staff are working together, to look at reducing those operational costs to a level that's consistent with the cost per student that we're currently incurring. There are going to be additional operational costs, no doubt. The question is, at what level? And we're working hard to make sure it's not, especially on day one, the $2.5 million number that, that you'd see if you were talking about a 2,000-student high school.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Report to the governing board regarding Proposition H and U by Katie Wright, Program Manager. Scott Patterson.
Yeah, I gave it away earlier, but in addition to Katie's standard report anticipating this item, we will have one slide on the cost of the, or excuse me, the trigger point, as well as trying to give you a kind of a snapshot overview of where we are in propositions H and U and what's still in front of us. We, you know, we want to put this in the best format that's usable for the governing board, so if we don't quite hit it here, let us know, and we'll, we'll, we'll refine it as necessary. Katie?
Thank you, Scott. Good evening, members of the board, Superintendent Haught, pleased to update you again tonight. Instead of blazing through my normal slides, I've added a couple of things in response to Mr. Hoy's questions that he asked recently at, let's say, where are we in terms of finances for Prop H? I've added this column here to show where we are against the expenditure amounts. We're about 80% spent, if you will, in Prop H. We'll have, be at 100% next, by the end of next month, when we finish Granite High School, the science building there. The reason we're not quite at 100% is the, the missing state dollars, if you will. We don't have them, to spend them, but we'll be happy to do so once we get them, and there's no real projection on the horizon when that'll happen. Although, I would say, next month, we could be in line for 20-plus million dollars, but there's still some things at the state that will determine whether or not that actually happens.
Katie, if I may, thank you. And this is an important point, and those of you who've been on the Construction Subcommittee have been beat over the head with this, but it, it really has put a crimp in our planning for the overall program. And as Katie mentioned, we're actually having to delay some aspects of Proposition H until the state funding comes in, because we've essentially spent all of the bond money that we were qualifying for, and now we're dependent on the state funding. There will still be construction going on, but it will be Proposition U. And we don't feel it's appropriate, unless a project was listed in both bond measures, we don't feel it's appropriate to take Proposition U dollars and backfill the state dollars on Proposition H. So, that's a theme that's been running through, and I know we, we keep hitting you with this, but it's something we just need to keep in our, in the forefront.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question on that, Ben.
Sure.
Can we get that list?
It might even be in here, is it, Katie? And the list of what's not going, what's being put on hold?
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, the thing that you're not going to backfill with Prop U because we don't have state-matching funds, so to keep it clean, do we have that list of those things that are going to sit?
I can break that out for you. I don't have that listed specifically tonight, but I can bring that next, next report.
In general, correct me if I'm wrong, Katie, it is the, the second half of classroom modernization called 3BR in Proposition H.
By name, it's 3BR, but we're moving where appropriate classroom facilities around that can, that, that can qualify under Prop H, if it helps with the sequencing.
Right.
So, we're advancing as much as we can, but what specifically is 3BR, I'll have to name for you next time, or send it in a report.
Thank you.
And in terms of Prop U, remember, we have the first bond issuance, we have a second one coming up here later, I believe, next month. You're seeing, this, this is all planning money that we're spending right now, and the master plan work that you've seen, or that's been discussed several times, that's what all those dollars are right now. And so, while we have done a lot of planning, we're in that phase right now, we're starting to, and I'll have more detail for you that later in this presentation to show you what's in planning, but that's the big push right now, is to get about $100 million worth of planning into DSA. Back to what work underway, as you well know, sciences are, are complete, they got August dedications on Grossmont and Helix. Those sites prepared, or were preferred to have that occur when they came back this next school year. Granite is smoking, it's going great, we're going to open that, finish that next month. It's over a month plus ahead of schedule, so that'll certainly be open for the new school year. The 800 building at Santana, the first CTE building's going very well, it'll be finished in the November timeframe. Steel Canyon Clock Speaker, Valhalla 300, now, this is our first 3BR modernization project, we moved that ahead, that's the, six science buildings are being reconverted to regular classrooms. So, that'll be a real quick turnaround, have six new classrooms there, LCAP parking lot. There's a number of little things going on, but again, my theme here is, our big push is, is design and planning, and, and that's why you'll see a little bit of a lull, because we had all those science buildings last summer, and then we don't have that this year. Special Ed always deserves attention here, Viking Hall, that's ahead of schedule here, oops, sorry, jumped on that. A little bit ahead of schedule there, instead of, sometime between January and summer, we think closer to January, we'll be ready to construct there. Work Training Center, sorry for the little typo there, it, it's also moved up just a little bit. The REACH program, remember, that'll be facilities on the, the parking lot, if you will, at Work Training Center. We had to separate out the site work because the DSA required that, so I'm showing you two, two different schedules for that. The REACH is in the parking lot, and all that work will occur this summer, so that'll, that'll be ready September, October, it might, we might need an extra month in there. And then Frontier, which is a conversion of some relos at Mount Miguel Campus, will also be done this summer, so we're making good progress across the waterfront there on Special Ed. Ed.
Katie, real quick.
Yes.
Back to the CTE building at Santana.
Yes.
Does 1D monies figure into any of this?
Yes, this is one that actually got, got grant money.
Okay, so that's...
Million three, something like that.
So that's added into the budget?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Just to roll up, these dots indicate the respective campus that had work in that phase, and it is complete, so all that's remaining in these first phases is to complete the construction at Gross, I mean, excuse me, Granite, next month, we're at Design Viking Hall, I just talked about that, we're in construction at Steel, and Design, I just talked about that, and then that'll complete those three phases in Prop H. So the, the numbers are this, 294 will be modernized, seven remaining, there'll be 83 new, we've got 19 remaining, and we'll, we'll have those here very shortly. So the numbers are pretty good. What this doesn't show you is 3BR, and that's what's remaining of, of H, and then the land purchase, actually, in H, but in terms of the bricks and mortar, we're, we're pretty close there. So what's ahead is we've combined the 3BR and U, because it just makes sense, and that's where we have the monies and the dollars, so all of this stuff is in design, and I've got a little more detail for you, but all of that's in design, and all that's out in the future with Prop U dollars. I haven't named specific buildings, but what I tried to categorize by program type, so CTE, we've got stuff in the hopper, Performing Arts, New Construction, you can see the rest. The detail of that first phase of Prop U, 3BR, is all these structures and all these classrooms on the next two pages, and it's a total of 181 classrooms, they're in different stages of design in DSA, and I know it's a lot to absorb, I just wanted to kinda give you a sense that this is a pretty big push here, and with stuff in DSA, with projects in DSA, that'll, they'll be coming out in the next month or two, we'll start to see our first inroads on construction in these projects as well. So that, just to finish up there. So it's a lot of work. To the question on the trigger, this is the language, it's actually in the ballot language, 23245 was, was the trigger point, and that was established in 78. So if you continue that trigger over, the trend line suggests that we've got plenty of enrollment to have the trigger come into effect in the fall. And to address also, oops, I jumped, what happened there? I missed a slide, I missed a slide in there, I do have it in your, your, your presentation there, I guess I hit it on myself, but it, it indicates that we've, we've differentiated, we've separated the site package, the infrastructure and grading package, from the building package, and that infrastructure and grading package here will go on in the next couple of months into DSA. The, the work will continue, the design will continue, and then it'll go into DSA, well past the trigger. The same with the building design and construction, it's just where we are in the sequence, so that it's, it's not possible, frankly, to start construction prior to that coming out of DSA, because we just, we won't have the approvals. So to address the question that had been raised at the CBOC, just wanted to clarify that for you. And then just finally, to talk about the land acquisition, that, that is extending out to the right a little, as well, with some negotiations with the, the owners of the two properties on the Lazy A, and then we're updating the appraisal on the other property. And that concludes my report.
Here's my question, and here's what I would, would like to see, and I'm, you know, I, I know I'm making work for you, but I think it's something that would, would at least help me and help the community see where we're headed. Some of the information's in here, but it's, it's not easy to, to pull out. We have H and U, we have 900 million, approximately, a little more, maybe, dollars. I wanna know how many classrooms total we have done so far, and, and to me, it's, right now, it's not important under which H or U. How many we've done so far, how much that has cost, round figures, and how many do we have left to do under 3BR and U, and how much that's gonna cost? And I'm assuming that means pretty much, I mean, that's, that's the, in 2019, when this ends, how many will we have done? And what is the cost estimated, of course, now, for some in the future, but we know what the past cost was? We are planning on putting up some multipurpose slash theater, you know, classroom. How many of those, and what is the estimated cost?
Okay.
Okay? We have CTE changes. How much of that, what's the cost? We have the 12th high school. The cost for three, for two pods, the cost for three pods. I guess what I'm trying to get at is to get the vision of where we are, what we have done so far, and what we spent, and how much money we have left, and, and our list of things to do, and how do they match? Given that we're talking about a point in time, and we can't know for sure what the cost will be in the future. But, you know, I, I wanna know, are we gonna, are we gonna end this bond in 2019, or do we project ending the bond in 2019 with 5 million left over, or many projects that we would like to do incomplete? And it sounds like a lot, but I actually want it simplified more than anything, like I would do my own budget at home. I have these, you know, 20 things I wanna do over the next year, this is the cost, this is my income. I, probably not making sense, but...
No, that's fine.
I was just asking if she puts costs to these here.
Well, yeah, I, I, you know, what is it gonna cost? For instance, we all talk about, we're gonna put in multipurpose rooms, and we're gonna get all of the classrooms, I assume all, renovated. Well, do we have, do we have the money? In 2007, right after I came on the board, we had a meeting out at Foothills, and I asked the question at that time, you know, what does it look like? And that's when Scott told us, look, here's your list of things to do, and here's how much we estimate it will cost, and we can't do it. There's just no way. We don't have enough money. And I guess that's what I'm saying, is maybe, maybe once a year, we ought to take a look at, you know, where we are now, and where we're headed. 'Cause I, you know, it, it would not be a good thing to get to 2014 or 15, and we've put multipurpose rooms on four campuses, and, and then we say, sorry, the other four, we're out of money. That may happen, but I wanna know as soon as possible.
Well, we welcome the opportunity to make you comfortable that there's built-in escalation, risk mitigation, and other contingencies, so that we never have to bring you that story, 'cause that's not a fun one to tell. So we think, we feel very comfortable that it's well-programmed, but we need to convey that to you, to do our job well. So we welcome that.
Sorry. I think the community would, would like to know what is planned, you know, we, we put that list out in front, but they, they wanna know, are all of our classrooms gonna be completed? Because at each school, I was out at, you know, I've, I've been at Santana, I've been at Helix, and one building's renovated, and the next one isn't. And, and it's gonna be, and I, and everybody asks, and I say, well, yeah, but we're gonna get to that one, and we're gonna get to this one, and we're gonna put out here in front, the multipurpose room is planned out here. Those are the kinds of things I, I, I wanna get a handle on, and your reports are good, but they are almost too detailed for me. I want the big picture.
Okay.
Okay?
Excellent. Thank you.
Can I follow up on that? We're talking about multipurpose rooms, but I don't see that anywhere in here. How is that?
I have them on the, that overall, present, in current planning.
'Cause you give me a list in 3BR, and I'm just looking at 3BR, the breakdown of the CTE, and that's spread out to 2017, Performing Arts, New Construction, PE Facilities, and Modernization. So I don't know what we're calling multi, multi-use.
The Performing Arts Centers are the multipurpose?
Okay, that is the multipurpose.
There, there was a morphing early in Proposition U, after we went back with the school sites and the visual and performing arts people, and it was very clear that they preferred a full performing arts complex than, than a multipurpose room, so we did make that shift at that time.
Okay, so we're not talking about multipurpose rooms anymore?
There is no cost attached to that.
You're right.
He wants cost, yeah.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm kind of, you know, I'm sitting there going, okay, what are there, eight? Eight of those at 10 million apiece, I'm, I'm making up figures.
Exactly, nine, 2013.
Okay, nine, so that's $90 million, and we have this much left, and then...
Okay.
You know?
Sure.
By project, yeah. And then also, what was I gonna ask you? I, I like this, this one graph, I think it, it gets to what he asked, so I think it did, but he's, we're looking for the cost. So you want the cost, the pre, the money spent to date on modernization on those items, and then now we're going forward with CTE, Performing Arts, New Construction, Modernization, and PE Facilities, and then we want a cost on that. And then also, on the Performing Arts, is the square footage the same on all campuses? All sites, pretty close?
Very, very, very close.
And that is what, 350 seats?
It varies a little bit, depends upon what adjunct facilities, if you will, they have, dance or other things, I could, I could collect all that for you.
Yeah, I'm just interested on the size for each one of those, as well with the price.
Katie, I'm not demeaning what you're giving us.
No, I'm, I'm good.
What, what this little pea brain needs is the big picture, okay? I, and, and if you can do it in fewer pages, in bigger font...
Just, just a long page.
You know, that's, that's, because that's what people understand, that you get buried sometimes in here, you can find it, and there's a lot of useful information, and important information, but I, I wanna look at kind of a big picture.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Item 8A, Adoption, one, Adoption of Resolution 2011-01, Regarding Agreement Between Grossmont Union High School District and Helix Charter High School. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Item 2, Ratification of Contract for Superintendent in accordance with GC Section 53262. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved?
Second.
Please vote. Business Services, Item 1, Approval of Monthly Budget Overview for the period ending May 31st, 2010. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve? So moved?
Second.
Discussion. Oh, yes, go ahead, sorry.
Scott, I, this looks very similar to our projections last month, right? Just on our three charters, they obviously have similar problems, or, you know, the state's funding is not the same for them either. Are they all, I mean, okay? We've, we went and got certified at the county last month. Are they okay? Yes, based on our review of their financials, it looks like they're going to end the year in okay financial position, some a little better than others. They're also, we're also looking very carefully at the budgets they're putting in place next year, and what cost-cutting measures they are putting in place. The other thing to know about them is they do have their own independent review through the County Office of Education, also, in addition to our review, so they get, they kinda get reviewed twice.
Double whammy.
Yeah.
Do you have an idea, up and down the state of California, the positive, the negative? I mean, obviously, the negative had to go up, if there were any.
There were, there, there were a few negatives, a bunch of qualifieds, and School Services of California puts those stats out. I can actually grab the stat that just came out a couple of weeks ago and give that to you undercover memo.
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you.
The, the one comment I, I would make on the financials, this is the month of May, and as somebody just said, this is very consistent with the projections that we were making at the time we were going through labor negotiations. We're, we're getting a little bit of bad news in that it looks like the special disabilities adjustment funding that we had counted on receiving for 910, but did not count on in 1011, may not be coming to us. It's still dependent upon legislation to fix it. It, it may become a cash issue, but what I'm, what I'm trying to say in a long way is that we will see that impact as we close the books this year, and hopefully, we know more as the state grapples with its overall budget picture. This has kinda gotten shoved off to the side, 'cause they've got the big state budget to, to fix, but you may recall, it's a million two to our district on an annual basis.
Right, and when I was up in Sacramento, one of the things that was talked about is the districts getting together and putting resolutions together to, to carry to Sacramento. Are we past doing that effort, or is that something that we could still consider?
It, it is something we could consider, I think the timing is something we also ought to consider, because it's, it's, since we missed the window of opportunity before they got caught up in the big budget debate, the window's really not open at this time. The window may open up later, and so there may be an opportunity for us to do this. The thing we have to remember is not every district participates, so it's not universal that everybody wants this fixed.
Right.
Because the other way of looking at this is if you're a district that doesn't participate in this funding, why not throw it in the big pot and spread it over the entire state? So we're in a club, and that club may get together and do something at some point when the window opens again.
Can you, would you mind monitoring that and seeing if that's a possibility? Because I think we can make a case, and I think it's important that we do make a case.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Please vote. Item B2, Ratification of Change Orders Approved Pursuant to Resolution 2010-82. Could I have a motion to discuss, and a second to discuss and approve?
So moved?
Second.
Any discussion?
Dick, I don't know about you, but these lines are getting smaller and smaller, don't you think, the graphics? I see a lot of white space here that could be used. Who are you looking at?
I'm just making sure we're taking notes.
No, it looks fine, that's great.
Any further discussion?
No.
Please vote. Item 3, Adoption of Resolution Number 2010-59 for a Master Program and Educational Specifications for the Grossmont Union High School District. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved?
Second.
Discussion.
Yeah, who wants to speak to this in a, in a nutshell? Because I think this is the, sorry, Mike, or Scott.
I'm just judging by Scott.
Oh, I, what'd you say? I will, okay, because first of all, we've done, we've done this in the past, correct?
Yes.
This is standard procedure.
Well, I should say, you have received briefings as they were progressing, and in the distant past, you have approved educational specifications.
Right.
The significance of this one is that we have gone through a new round of master programming on the educational, the instructional program side, and it relates to some of the discussion we were having earlier.
Right.
And so now it's appropriate that we have completed those discussions and established those standards, you can think of these as standards. We've now flowed that into the, what's called the educational specifications, which are the sizes of the spaces, and that kinda thing. So we've updated it for such things as career technical education, visual and performing arts, the 12th high school, the MET program, and alternative education. So we are asking the board to adopt the resolution to officially approve... So we are asking the board to adopt the resolution to officially approve the master program. This is a waiver, by the way. This is available electronically, by the way, too. So the board will officially approve these standards that guides us as we move forward. And when updates are required, we come back to you.
And I think, this is a biggie one, a lot of work went into this one because I think this really parallels what we're doing out in the field construction-wise and really helps to drive that, more so than I think we've had in the past, does it not?
Oh, definitely. Well, I shouldn't necessarily say that.
I mean, we did do, we did do that in the past, but it's keeping it with the times and the innovation and the movement and all that kind of stuff. So it's much more comprehensive, I would say.
Yeah, and I would say that we've made a very conservative, concerted effort through our facilities organization and working with Mike's branch to be very inclusive, to get the right people in the room to tell us. So you don't, the last thing you want is a bunch of facilities people going off and just making those decisions.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Thank you to everybody who worked on it.
Item four, ratification of extensions as requested. Approval of not-to-exceed NTE dollar amounts for professional service consultants contracts for the year 2010-11 fiscal year and authorization for superintendent or designee to renew, enter into new contracts or amend contracts as needed and to authorize work in accordance with these dollar amounts. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Scott, we've done this before, correct? I mean, year after year, we do these NTEs, right?
Yes, sir.
Do we ever receive a report? I know you know the answer to this, but do we ever receive a report that, let's say we said not to exceed a half a million dollars. At the end of the year, it says that was it, but we spent 200,000 or we spent the full 500 or we had to ask for an amendment? Or is that just, I mean, there's only five of these here, you know?
I can't think of a format that we've brought to you that has compared the original NTE value with the actual amounts, if that was your question. We can certainly do that.
Is it a big deal to do something like that?
It depends on how many contracts you multiply the task by. I mean, if we're talking about the major ones, a million dollars and up, I think that's fairly, fairly doable. We get into some pretty small contracts.
Oh, I'm not worried about that.
Okay.
And I think for the most part, we usually, I mean, I know I catch them when you bring them back because you hear about it. And, you know, so when there's an increase in the not-to-exceed, we catch those. And so, you know, that is just either under budget or I think it was during the time where we were really reviewing our contracts not-to-exceed and making sure that the scope matched the work. And so you're going to get that obviously from time to time and sometimes it's just the change in, change in scope or the length of the service, so, okay. Good job.
Just, just to clarify, this was a component of an item that we had on the agenda last time that we withdrew. This group right here excludes the architects, the GAFCON program management, and the contracts that are still under review by staff and GAFCON. So that's why you see several items on the agenda tonight.
Okay, please vote. Item five, approval of not-to-exceed NTE dollar amount for the following professional architectural service contracts for the 2010-11 fiscal year and authorization for superintendent or designee to authorize work in accordance with these dollar amounts and amendment of Runal Contract as requested. A, Harley Ellis Deveraux Corporation. B, Runal Runal Clark. C, Sprott Watson. D, Tritipo Architecture and Planning. And E, IBI Group. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
There is a motion and second on the floor. Is there any discussion?
Besides, and I think we brought this up before, besides the architectural piece of it, the drawings, what are some of the other professional services that we're asking architects to do?
The basic task of a, of a design architect or the architect of record is the plans and drawings, taking that through the DSA review process, contract administration. In other words, while the construction is occurring, the architect needs to be there to answer questions, to approve change orders, to design change orders, and then also to do project closeout. So they're all doing that. Tritipo of this group also has the additional task of doing what are called material specifications. In other words, it's very much like ed specs, but it has to do with materials. They're the ones who decide when you buy furniture for a classroom, this is what's allowable. These one choice or these two choices. If you're going to use a stucco wall, this is, these are the specifications for all that. So we have to have a design architect develop that and then that's provided to all the other architects. But the vast majority of the work that you see here is the four big tasks that I mentioned all the way from plans and specs through project closeout.
I think I asked this before to you, but we have no rollover plans at this point. I think you said no. Because we, we're modernizing buildings, so you don't need an architect on a building you've already, a similar building that you've just previously designed, correct? Or, no? You said something and I just want to clarify it.
Well, let me take a couple of stabs at it and I'll see if I hit it. On the dollar amount piece, even if we have dollars remaining from the prior authorization that the board gave us, we come to you and ask for new authorization, how much we can commit in the upcoming fiscal year? And that's, those are the dollar amounts that you see here. When we have tasks that are similar to what we have done in the past, we still do need an architect to do site adaptation, anything peculiar about that site. So somewhere in there, I hope I hit, I hit your question.
But the, the cost would still, it would still decrease because it's not a brand-new architectural drawing.
True, especially if you're talking about new construction. The 12th High School is a good example. The, the science classrooms are a good example. We didn't pay time after time after time for a full design. We just paid for one design and then the site adaptation of that. So when you're able to do that, you dramatically reduce the architect cost.
Reduce the cost. Perfect, thank you.
I should have asked this probably before, but when we say a not-to-exceed amount, how do, how do we come up with that? Do we sit down and, and talk and say, this is what we think is going to occur this year? Is that the way it's done?
Yeah, that's exactly the way it's done. And Bob and Katie have a big task on a big program like this because they need to contemplate a particular consultant or professional services task throughout the program. In other words, if we're going to go hire an environmental firm, if you will, there could be environmental work on many different projects involving many different program or project managers. So they do an assessment collectively of everybody who may need that work because as we've discussed before, when we ask for a not-to-exceed, that's exactly our objective. We don't want to exceed it and we don't want to have to keep coming back to the board and pestering you again and again for more dollars. That's why we're asking for an amount that we believe we can operate within.
Item six, adoption of resolution 2011-02 declaring an emergency exists and requesting approval from the County Superintendent of Schools to enter into contracts without advertising or inviting bids. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Tell us about this, yeah.
Yeah, really. Periodically you come across items that introduce environmental issues. And when you do, you have to involve the Department of Toxic Substance Control, DTSC. We found such a condition when we were doing the science classroom and locker room at Grossmont High School. We turned that over essentially to the DTSC and they began calling the shots about what the remediation will be. They have determined that the right remediation is to do some removal under what's called a removal action work plan. We are in a position where we want to get this done since it does involve hazardous materials, taking materials off-site and securing them. We want to get it done before the kids get back. So we want to request a waiver now that they've given us the green light to dispense with competitive bidding, select a contractor and get it done. We've had preliminary discussions with the County Office of Ed, who's the one that determines whether they're going to provide this approval or not. They've indicated they, they don't see a problem in approving this, but we do need to formally ask for the waiver from them. We need to get them to approve the waiver.
Okay, and I see your, it's a $350,000 contract, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? Item seven, ratification of extension, authorization to renew and amend agreement A-5466 with GAFCON Incorporated only on the above terms and conditions. Approval of not-to-exceed NTE dollar amount for the 2010-11 fiscal year and authorization for superintendent or designee to execute same and authorization for superintendent or designee to authorize work in accordance with this dollar amount. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
I've got some questions. The not-to-exceed for, for the coming year is 2.7. What was it last year?
Last year was a 10-month engagement because it ran from September through June and that was at 2.2 million dollars. We were endeavoring to get it on a fiscal year basis along with all of our other professional services contract. It started in the September timeframe because that's when we first hired the GAFCON Harris team. So the 2.2 million, if you extrapolated that over 12 months, it'd be about 2.6.
Did we, you didn't come back to us because we went over that, did you? If a problem were to arise with GAFCON, this is a one-year contract, do we have any outs?
Yes, there are termination provisions in the agreement for two potential paths there. One is what's called for convenience, meaning the district just decides to terminate the contract. We're required to give 65 days' notice in that event. The other reason is for cause, if there's a violation of the contract, that's a five-day notice. So yes, I mean, there are provisions for ending the contract in advance of the expiration
Does the CBOC, Alan is here, so I'm just curious, does it?
And Mindy.
And Mindy, oh, I'm sorry. And Mindy, and don't do that, I wear glasses. I don't. Does the CBOC look at these kinds of contracts and determine, or at least try to determine whether they are within the standards that, you know, yeah, well, not only that the market bears, but, you know, are they reasonable and necessary for the kind of job that we ask them to do and for the size of the bond? Is this outlandish or is it, you know, do they do that? I don't know who I'm asking.
Okay, so our charge with CBOC is to make sure that the taxpayer dollars are spent correctly and reasonably, just like your question. So we came to you guys, if you'll remember, in '09, asking for the third-party review. And the third-party review was able, it was a tool that allowed us to have an expert come in and make an objective assessment of these costs. And as you'll remember, the third-party review did come out in saying that in comparing these costs to the costs from other districts for similar, similar work, that these costs were reasonable. As far as how the CBOC looks at it more in-depth, the GAFCON contract was brought to our Audit and Finance Subcommittee meeting and was discussed there with that Subcommittee regarding the negotiation process that the district was choosing to engage in with GAFCON. Does that help?
And then one other question as I look through here. The, the rate, the rate list, I guess that's what you would call it, for all of this, I guess that it's a fee schedule, what GAFCON charges if it uses, if it uses these people, right? It may not use all of them. Now, the rate is per hour, correct?
Yes.
But what does that include? In other words, if I went to work for GAFCON, and I'm seriously considering that, you know, but if I went to work for GAFCON and let's say I was a program director, okay, or, and it says 200 an hour. So I would expect to get paid $200 an hour, correct?
I think you'd be disappointed.
Well, I don't want to be disappointed. Tell me how.
The rate that we pay a contractor is what we refer to as an all-up rate. It's the amount that goes to the employee for their pay. It's the amount that goes toward whatever benefits the company elects to provide its employees. It goes to the, the overhead that's incurred by that corporation. And also, we've got to remember, these folks are in business, there's a profit margin built in there, too. And in this case, it happens to be 10%. So it's very, excuse me?
Sometimes.
Yeah, right. It's very difficult to match what's paid on an hourly basis to a consultant who's got all those cost elements into it, to what a person makes working for the district or any other organization.
Because they would also have what, general, maybe not, general liability? Do they carry that or they, or workers comp?
I kind of lumped that into over, well, there are benefits that go to what you're paying the employee and what are you paying on behalf of the employee for medical, health, all the statutory stuff, workers comp, all that, as well as the insurance that they need to carry, they need to pay for their central office and so forth. I will make the point that we have just recently completed the negotiations of the contract to the satisfaction of both parties and we're recommending approval of this amendment for the next fiscal year. And I think we've covered this point, but the not-to-exceed amount is just that. This is not a firm fixed-price contract where GAFCON gets 2.7 million dollars. They are paid on the rate schedule, as you pointed out, as services are requested and delivered. The key changes to this are a reduction in their rates of 3%. That was the subject of some negotiation. That made sense to us because that's very equivalent to what we've asked our own employees to take in terms of a rollback. We've clarified that these services are to be provided as an extension of district staff in partnership on program management. We've established a process by which if there are services that may be provided by GAFCON but may also be provided by another provider, there's a process by which we determine who provides the superior product. That's done in conjunction with GAFCON. We've written that provision into the contract. And we've also established the termination provisions that I outlined earlier. So we would recommend approval of this amendment.
Well, thank you for working towards that and working for a equitable arrangement as we see it and bringing the parties together, so, thank you.
Okay, item C, human resources, number one, approval of revised pay rates for adult education and ROP-certificated substitute employees effective June 3, 2010. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Please vote. Item two, approval of revised agreement with the Services Employees International Union, SEIU, on salary and benefits for the 2010, 2011, and 2011, 2012 school years, which has been ratified by SEIU membership, including disclosure of major provisions of the agreement between the district and the Service Employees International Union, including costs that would be incurred by the district under the agreement for the current would be incurred by the district under the agreement for the current and subsequent fiscal years, in accordance with AB 1200 and GC Section 3547.5. Could I have a motion and second to discuss and approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Okay, moving on to the consolidated agenda. The consolidated motion expedites board action on all agenda items which are not held for discussion. Items not held will be approved as written as part of the consolidated agenda. Items that are held are excluded from the consolidated agenda and will be acted upon individually. Do any board members have any items to be pulled? Could I have a motion and second to approve the consolidated agenda as written?
Second.
Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, moving on to board member reports. Begin with member Kelly. What would you like to report this evening?
Well, I'm ecstatic with our selection of the new superintendent. We can't reveal what went on in closed session. We wouldn't want to make any comparison between the different candidates and applicants. But all I can say is this, 'cause I don't think this violates any closed-session rules. I found Ralph Swinson to be one of the most personable, comfortable, a, a, a natural leader, a man who just seems to exude integrity and transparency, a beautiful sense of humor, terrific personality, a real people person. I am predicting that he is going to be a tremendous hit. He, I, I think people are gonna be thanking us for a long time for the choice of Mr. Swinson as our superintendent. I'm so excited, and I can tell you, this board, to a person, is extremely excited. And, you know, I feel like more can and should be said, but I'm not eloquent. But I'll leave it to the rest of the board members to give their comments. Dick and Priscilla put on the spot there to say something spontaneously, and they were told, they only had a few words. But I am telling everyone, you're, you're gonna like this guy. That concludes my report.
Well, I've enjoyed getting to know our interim superintendent, Dr. Ha.
Yes, yes.
It's been a great experience, even though it's been a very short one. And I do look forward to working with our new superintendent with the best hopes and of dreams of what we can become, of getting better every single month.
First of all, I just want to tell staff, thank you for, we, you know, we pulled those contracts back, and, and I appreciate the opportunity that we had to kind of really delve into it and ask those, those questions. And I don't know how that's gonna look in the future, but we've started to pull a lot of things out of the consent agenda. But I think that's important for the board's discussion and transparency, and people get to hear the concerns that we have, and not put everything in the consent agenda. So I appreciate you working with the board to, to bring that back. I, I'm not, I, I think I said all I was, all I needed to say up there before. Thank you for the impromptu opportunity to do so. Again, Dr. Ha, we just love having you here. And it's always bittersweet when we have, when we hire a superintendent, but you still have plenty of time with us, and we just love working with you. Mike Lewis, our condolences to you and your family for your loss. And I can say, besides going to Grass Valley, the two graduations I attended, I think I reported, I report on El Cap and, and West Hills, and what I like to get from our principals, I'm really proud of what we do in all of our schools, and it's amazing to see the numbers that come through. So at El Cap, their stats were a national merit scholarship finalist, top 5%, point, 0.5% nationally of students taking the PSAT in their junior year, seven league titles, as you saw one tonight, one CIF championship, was the one you saw tonight, and over $1.5 million in scholarships. At West Hills, 137 honor grads with a 3.5 or higher. 52 of the honor grads had a 4.0 or higher, approximately 7, 17, wait, $1,748,000 in scholarship money. One grad accepted to the U.S. Naval Academy in Annapolis. 14 confirmed enlistments in the military. 99 students planning on attending four-year universities, and 14 students with partial or full athletic scholarships. So very proud of our students across the board, and it's always fun to be at the, the graduation. So, anyway, end of my report. Thank you.
I went to two graduations, Santana and Rosemont, and I was really impressed by the valedictorian speeches. The kids are really good, and I, I shouldn't say kids, because they're basically young adults. And I was very pleased that, at Santana, the valedictorian singled out five teachers for special recognition for what they had done. And the surprising thing was, the kids, the, the students, the seniors responded. So you could tell it wasn't that that teacher just affected that kid, but that teacher affected a, a lot of kids at that school. Again, Mike, our condolences. And I am excited about having a new superintendent, but I, Don, you come and you go. You don't seem to be able to hold a job. And, and I, I, it does, doesn't it? Because all of a sudden, it's Saturday again, isn't it? For those of you who don't work with, or haven't worked with Don, he is remarkable. The minute we found out that Bob Collins was leaving, the first comment, and it was unanimous on this board, is, "Well, is Don Ha available?" Or, or that. There was that. But, 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 you know, you are a consummate superintendent, and, and...
Is he recommended to you?
That's right. We, we actually, Grass Valley, we said, "There's a guy down there you will love." And I want you to know how much I appreciate the, the calm, steadying influence you have when we're in the midst of change. And I, I wish you the best. Our hope is that Ralph will be with us a long time. But, you know, in 10, in 10 years, we may need you. Okay? So stay healthy.
All right, thank you. Are there any items for future board meetings that members would like to request? Okay, our next meeting, regular meeting, will be on Thursday, September 2, 2010, at, at this location, East County Regional Education Center. And there is a special meeting scheduled for Monday, July 19, 2010, at our district office. Meeting adjourned.
8:59. Whoa, it's Tracy.
I got to see it. That's right.
What are the times of those meetings, Debbie? What, what's it?